I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its essence.
And we have a district mission statement? Now, sure. The mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community while providing substantial learning experiences, safe trust, and motivation for life. Thank you. And then we have open forum. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, you may do so now. Okay. We have practice duty and achievements. Just talking off the cuff here. So we want to make note and Valerie for eight years of service dedication to the school district, to the kids, to families, to Valerie, and Valerie Harper's old foreman, and make sure at all meetings, everything you guys do, and you guys do much more than obviously the others are more than me. So we want to make people's commitment here, both in a way, dear rest, we both make wonderful contributions, but definitely add to the school, to the community, to the questions. I think we have something to say anything? We will do now.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you all. I have a lot to thank the committee that I work with so hard, and it is, and we're great. I want to thank Robyn, who just signed my writing, and always keep us on track, and our administrators, who are wearing two hats at many, many times in our district, our teachers, our staff, our families, our kids. It's really been my pleasure.
I can't add much more about it. It's been a long time, eight years does seem good, but it goes by fast, because I think we've had a lot of progress. There's a lot more work to do, but for Charlotte Lannan, I've been chatting with two years of you guys, but you are a great perspective, and that's important. We can be back as a whole, while Terry and I got this in line from trouble many times. We actually, you know, it's funny, when you came on, I was thinking, okay, here's the pot stirrer from West Greenwich, and now, okay, here we go. And we've worked together very well, and appreciate every credit, and I enjoy working on both of you. Now, I don't know, I didn't text together, we should still be sitting here, that's my opinion. Plodding, I know how much work it is, and it's a fabulous job that you do, and thank you so much, you do so well. And administrators, I'm awesome. You guys, how are you guys doing? Oh, I haven't thought of that for a long time. You know, we're a great district, and what you guys do. And Robyn, I already told you about the show.
Yes.
Thanks. Everybody, Barbara, fantastic team of work, and we're going to do some things together. And so, thank you. Actually, I'm not Pat's here, because I have one memory that really, you know, that stands out.
Not that one.
And I'll make you, I don't want to embarrass you. Like, your son, I mean, he came to be a hero years ago, many years ago, and a warrior, but he proved that success, you know, that everybody can do it. And when he walked across last year at graduation, it was the greatest thing I could say. So thank you for trusting us.
Who did everybody wrong?
Well, thank you for trusting us, and you had everything we were here, so it was a fantastic story.
He got an awful big cheer. He wanted to for us. Thank you.
Consent agenda includes the approval of minutes from our emergency meeting on November 1st, also the executive session meetings, meeting minutes from the same evening. We have our regular meeting minutes from November 9th, and executive session minutes from November 9th as well. There are a couple of appointments. The first is for the replacement to, replacement for John Crome, who resigned after he took the athletic director's position. Derek Thayer is a special education teacher at our high school. Priscina Rosado to the position of full-time teacher assistant. She is already an employee. She was hired for the four-hour recess position at Metcalf, and this replaces the retirement of Andy that we accepted at one of the recent school committee meetings. We also have a letter of resignation. Nicole Butler is a part-time, was a part-time E.L.A. teacher. We hired her at the beginning of this year. She has accepted full-time employment. So she finished on November 18th. It was right around the same time that we were ending the student teaching experience of a couple of students that we had in our English department at our high school. So one of them was, has been now subbing in that position, and she'll just maintain the role of a sub until the end of the semester, because the position that Nicole is leaving was only for the first semester. So it's been a seamless transition. Things seem to be going very smoothly there. We have our monthly bills, and then a couple of school approvals, and I reviewed all the work, and they've submitted everything that is necessary for an approval.
I'd like to fold the November 1st meeting and the executive meeting. Yeah, the emergency meeting. So the minutes and the executive meeting. Okay, so we can have a motion, Mike, as the emergency meeting minutes, the executive session is on November 1st.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda plus the approval of the November 1st meeting minutes.
Second.
Why? Thank you. I have a second.
We also favor abstentions. And then, also, if I have an emergency meeting.
Make a motion to accept the emergency meeting minutes of November 1st, second.
Favor and abstentions. That is, okay. Yeah, ready? In business, we have the University of Rhode Island College of Pharmacy, and our registered addiction and medication safety project.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm Jeff Robert. I'm a clinical professor of pharmacy practice at University of Rhode Island College of Pharmacy, and I'm here to give you a few slides and answer your questions about the study we're doing. So we call it the Prescription for Addiction and Medication Safety, the RAMS, which is our mascot. Evaluating Teen Education or Hopeful Abuse is a pilot program. We'd like you guys to participate in. So why is this? Is that we are in an epidemic. Fatal overdoses are on the rise. Rhode Island ranks seventh in the nation for overdoses per capita, and fortunately only rising despite Rhode Island being a national leader in interventions to fight the epidemic, which is why it's so important to work at the ninth grade level that we propose. And when you look at specific Rhode Island data, and this recent data we have from 2015, 13.1% of all Rhode Island students, so it's not broken down by school there, have used prescription medications non-medically. That's higher than national trends. And where did they get it? But one in 10 of them got it at school. So we look at it more specifically, the data from the CDC. 10% of Rhode Island educators reported on a survey that they ever took prescription drugs. Now, that includes opioids, which is Oxycontin, Percocet, Vicodin, but also stimulants as well. 6% currently took it without a doctor's prescription, which defines as misuse. 12% who last got the prescription drug without a doctor's prescription got it at the school, and that was under 15 years of age. Probably most startlingly, 3.8% ever used heroin one or more times during their lifetime. That was data from about a year, year and a half ago. So obviously, there's great risk here. Those are startling statistics, but when you use opioids or other prescription medications non-medically, they can transition to heroin, and that's why we're essentially having a heroin epidemic in the Northeast and other areas of the country, Ohio, West Virginia, Kentucky, Tennessee, New Mexico, and Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and maybe. So predictors of that transition is really right at that, 15 years of age, initiation of non-medical use, and they're using it non-medically to get high, and lifetime use of non-medical prescription use is one other predictor of transition to heroin. Why high schools? Well, this weaves in with some of the legislation that has been passed in the educational regulations. Mandated instructional outcomes here in every school in Rhode Island. The school committee shall support instruction efforts, and we're just reading this direct from the bill, alcoholic, liquor, stimulants, and narcotics, so opioids are narcotics. Incorporating mandatory instruction in grades 1 through 12 on the effects of alcohol substance use in existing health education or other courses, and secondary education is charged with the administration of a program like this. We have that program. This complements this. The program we're proposing complements this, these outcomes. So what is the program? It's a student-delivered program, so it's unique in that senior student pharmacists are trained to deliver this curriculum that my colleague and I, a faculty, Kelly Mattson, and I designed, using evidence-based guidelines for delivering to ninth graders, and the data that we present, and the way that we present it as an active learning kind of curriculum. They regularly meet with ninth-grade students to discuss the dangers of misuse of opioids. This is not a don't do drugs program. This is a, here are the dangers, here's what you can do to help you, so you'll recognize it. So let's say there's no problem in Exeter West Greenwich, and most recent statistics specific by school shows not as big a problem here as some other schools that we're partnering with in this program, but still, students help parents, help the community, and so it's an effort to start with students and go off from there. Again, it's an interactive, small group curriculum designed specific to what the principal superintendent wants, and I can talk about what other schools have done up to this point. And again, based in school and community, and students can meet with athletes, and parents, and forms, and things like that. One update is, just last week, we met with two, we're going to have two public relations intern students, American School, our new communication school, that will design social media and other kinds of messages that can be pushed out and designed specifically for the school, make videos that are specific to the school, to connect to parents and the community, to look at some of the curriculum, to really have the curriculum not just live in the three hours, but to continue on. And I work, I'm on the governor's task force for overdose intervention and prevention, and those folks are interested in seeing how people communicate with this, so it really has a life of its own, the obvious. The things we're talking about in those, we called it four weeks, but it depends, and each school does it differently. Safe storage and use of disposal of medications, everyone can appreciate that. Looking at signs and symptoms and risk factors for opioid misuse and withdrawal, again, teaching students to recognize that others are at risk. How to identify overdoses and response. Well-known data shows that people know how to respond to overdose, and the tools to respond, people bit more frequently. And of course, if we're recognizing people and saving them from overdose, or potentially saving them from overdose, we want to connect students themselves and the community to other treatment and recovery resources, because a lot of people aren't in treatment and recovery because of stigma and things like that. So that's our fourth week. What's our goal is really to say, what do students know? There's, what are their perceptions related to prescription drug abuse? And examine, we have two surveys that'll talk about, that will give, looking at substance misuse and the recall technology skills, things we all know as educators, so you teach something, something that they don't use, or they don't continue. So we'll see if this works, if it's a study. So here in the fall, we've enrolled, I think you are the seventh or eighth school, so we've delivered the curriculum in East Greenwich, and we're in the midst of delivery in Burville, and we're going to do Wind Socket in a few weeks. The schools in the spring are going to be East Providence, Tiverton, Coventry, and Bristol Warren, and with your approval, we'll leave you guys. So we'll deliver that in the spring. Your order's about the same. We do an initial student survey. The survey takes between 15 and 20 minutes. Some students take longer, and then we have the curriculum, and then we do another survey about one or two months later to see if there's a change in that. So that's really what the spring is, where you'll start in the spring, this expanded curriculum and then the pilot survey. So we originally had three surveys, but we're really going to modify this with approval by IRB to do just two surveys. What do they ask in the surveys? If you have a copy of that, I can pull that up if you want to review it. This is approved by our U.R. Institutional Review Board. It's approved by the Rhode Island Department of Education Legal Team. The questions are validated questions. They're approved by, they're modified or directly taken from two different surveys from the U.S. and what's called the Ontario Substance Abuse Curriculum, which are designed for ninth-grade students to take, and they've been used for decades in those settings. They'll ask about past use of opioids and alcohol, risk and protective factors for substance use, awareness of resources, how aware are they on that, and then some of the questions that we teach in the curriculum, disposal, how to administer naloxone, which is a drug that's, that is extraordinarily effective in reversing opioid overdoses, and it's all done electronically. If necessary, if you have paper, we can do that too, but it's all done through survey on key. The incentives to participate is you'll get $1,000 for interrupting your curriculum to deliver this, for the time and energy posting, and you can decide what you want to do with that. And then again, along the theme of connecting the school to this curriculum and having it go on, this is only a one-year program, only the grant for one year, is to have youth-to-youth international, Eastern State Summer Conference, two high school students that you can determine to choose in whatever way you want. We'll have a scholarship for them to attend, and it happens to be in Rhode Island, I think all the way in Lincoln. So you'll have to decide if you'll need a voucher for travel, but anyway. So the students will go there with the expectation that they'll come and keep delivering some sort of interventions like that. We'll provide study results. The way the survey is taken, it's, students design a, the questions are asked in a way to make sure the students have a code that's unidentifiable to the student, and they enter their code for the next survey. So it's linked, their answers are linked between the two surveys they take, but we can't identify them. The IRB and Rhode Island Department of Education have very strict rules on how we protect the data. The survey is protected. It's probably more protected, I can tell you, it is more protected electronically. And if you want the data, we can give it to you under protected means, again, all in aggregate. We won't identify particular schools, let me present this at conferences, but you're free, we're happy to come back in the spring and present the data. But again, it would be only aggregate for you guys, only if you want, or schools separate it. Any publication, it would be, you know, a school after some of that. We wouldn't identify the schools in any publications. We've had a pretty good run. Our students are fantastic. We have about 60 students who are excited to deliver this curriculum, 60 student pharmacists. About 15 or 20 have participated in delivering into half of the ninth graders in East Greenwich. They're delivering into all of the ninth graders in Burville right now. In East Greenwich, it's in their health class in Burville, their English classes. Every school can decide where they want us to go. And I don't know where it's going to be able to sign, but I think, whatever. So that's my short presentation. I don't mean to, as my students said, I talk a little fast, so happy to answer any questions you have about the program.
I have a question. Quitting during the school day, is this going to be delivered?
We're looking at putting it through the health classes, because it fits nice with the curriculum. And it just so happens that ninth and 10th graders have health next semester, so the majority of them.
Okay. And we can deliver it to other grades too, as well. Yeah.
Sounds fabulous. Thank you for that.
Yeah, we're hoping to get, with this data, we hope to, we presented a conference directed for these kinds of things. Obviously, there's huge national interest. If you go to turnthetiderx.org, you'll see the Surgeon General's report on fighting addiction, which mentions Rhode Island and the program we started in pharmacies, actually, so that's, really proud of that, but, because you can get naloxone in pharmacies, so specific to that. But the issues addressed in there are addressed by the governor's task force, and one thing that we didn't focus on is high school, so I think this is where we need to deliver it, and it starts here. So in fact, I literally just sent a link to some of our materials to a student who wants to herself deliver it in Pennsylvania high school. So, you know, this has a life of its own, and if we show that, it shows a difference, that's really great.
Is there any value to extending it to maybe a broad section of either parents or not?
We can, Ryan says you have to approve what we're doing, and then we can go to town and deliver what you guys want.
Because I don't think that you want awareness of all of us.
Hundred percent. The way to deliver this is really to the community, and I think that we're really, I mean, what you're hearing that other school committees haven't heard is, literally last week, we had these PR students who are fabulous and are, you know, again, the idea that we bought a service that delivers text messages, so you'd all sign up for, none of you look old enough to have kids who text, but let's just say, in the school, you've heard that sometimes parents text their children. I think my daughter's five, I'm sure next year she'll have a phone, so I don't know what's going to happen there, but, but you can all sign up for a text plan, and you'll get pushed a link to a video that's directly made for Exeter West Greenwich, or a video that's made at U.R. Again, but there's lots of possibilities to get parents here in this curriculum to say, hey, parents, do you, you know, did your child talk to you about disposal? Did your child talk to you about, wow, you know, mom's a nurse, and mom's a pharmacist, maybe they should have naloxone, because they can respond to emergencies, and maybe everybody should have it, because anyone can respond, things like that. So we can talk about what are the appropriate menus for that. Again, we have lots of students who want to deliver this, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the University of Rhode Island College of Pharmacy re-ends.
Is that, any further discussion? May I have one question?
Yeah.
If we, if we approve the program, any component that you can deliver, like the community outreach?
Again, it's a pilot, so we're happy to work with you, again, to do.
But we don't have to put it in our motion to approve the project.
The project, RIDE requires any survey that's approved by them to be approved by the school committee to deliver. So really, the study is the survey. All the other stuff is just stuff that we want to do, and we have funding to do, so.
Thank you. Okay. A little favor, abstentions. Thank you so much.
So I just need the approval letter. Thankfully, without that. Oh, you have it. That is, you were very efficient. I love West Greenwich, but I've been on the D-MAN team for like 15 years, so I'm sure you, maybe you're not supposed to be on the D-MANS here, up the road.
We know.
All right, thanks. Have a good meeting, have a Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too. Okay, so guys, I just think of the budget. So we're going to go back to the 2017-18 budget. We're going forward.
Anything on the budget by September 18?
Just, everybody's got their budgets, they're building them, or on skid.
I have one thing. I was playing around on the computer the other day looking for something, and I came across the preliminary numbers that are on the RIDE website for anticipated funding for next year. So I haven't really studied it closely, but I will have it prepared, and I will talk about it before the next meeting. It will be year seven of the funding formula, and we are slated to have a $290,000 reduction in state aid as a result of this year seven of the funding formula. What I don't know is if that's offset at all by some of the other transportation, because we had that big conversation last year. So I'll have the information for you for the next meeting, but if you hear anything, that document was recently put out. And the only thing that I do for sure is that our funding, minus the categorical stuff, but the funding itself is just about $300,000 less, and that's the funding formula adjustment year seven. How many years is the funding formula? Is it? Ten. So if they keep reducing it by that much, we might as well just not get any money from the state. That's how.
It's ridiculous.
It's unbelievable.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, so what I would make, legal representation at the towns, will there be budget meeting discussion?
So this is on the agenda as a result of a meeting that we represented, the school committee, we went with Andrew to a meeting, a town council meeting, and this was, there's a lot behind this, but it's the result of us getting extra money after the budget was approved. So we know how that all played out, and that we have credited the towns, and that will be documented when we present the budget for FY18. But at that meeting, I wasn't present, but at that meeting, I believe that we were asked to have legal representation at all of our future budget meetings. And if I can just say a couple of things, and then you feel free to say whatever you want, because you were there and I wasn't. I just want to remind everybody that we knew that we were arranging for some advocacy to get funding back for regional transportation. That conversation was happening well before, during the budget development process, well before the budget was adopted. Things got delayed, you know, we even had a snow day, we had to postpone our state house visit that we arranged. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, the final approval to add the funds back that we were anticipating in the first place came after the all-day referendum. That's what created the issue for us. So we were originally involved in all of the conversations. The expectation was that, you know, we advocate, we hope that the money comes back to us, it comes back to us in time, we can add it into the budget in advance of the all-day referendum, no problem whatsoever. The problem is, once the ADI happened, we can't then go back and change the budget. So we had to go about crediting the towns in a different way. I think what some people heard was that if we got extra money, that it would be given back to the towns, which in fact, it is. It's just being given back in a different way than what they anticipated. So unfortunately, it created a little bit of a problem over something that I think is a really positive thing, that the school department took an active role in trying to get more money, and we were successful, and it created some controversy over how that money was going to benefit the two towns. So we had a request to bring legal representation to budget meetings. Personally, I don't know why it's necessary, but it would hurt, and.
It would be an expense.
It would be an expense, and so I'm just putting it on the table because it was requested that it be an engine item.
There was a town council.
The West Village Town Council requested it, and the reason they requested it was more or less so that when things are said, there'd be someone there that could clarify, stop, you know, put it in the appropriate framework, so we wouldn't have any misunderstanding in the future. But to your point, the misunderstanding took place as a result of the final approval coming after the, after the approved budget legal made, when the governor got around.
Yes.
Doing it, and so that's what created the misunderstanding. And I don't know that, I don't know that having legal consequences. And I don't know that, I don't know that having legal counsel would have, present would have changed anything in that particular circumstance. So I think more or less, in my opinion, was a thing going on at that meeting, and Andrew and I just happened to be the folks who got offended at it, so.
Such a unique situation also, that that situation probably will not arise again.
I'm guessing it won't. And, but I will guess that it will happen in the opposite direction. So one of the things that I continuously reminded people of, and the school committee is well aware, that for a number of years, including the previous year to this one, we had budgeted a certain amount of money, and then the end result was that we got less. So the year before, we budgeted, we actually budgeted for the increase in regional transportation, because it was pretty much told to us that it was almost a given. When the final budget came out, they had reduced it all. So we, we got hit with the three hundred and something thousand dollar reduction. We didn't go back to the towns and say, sorry, but you approved this budget, and it's not enough. We had to assume that responsibility. The reverse happened for this fiscal year, that we did not budget for it, and then it came. And so, you know, you could say that it was a wash, but we didn't do that. We still came together as a committee, did the right thing, and voted to find a way within the legal parameters to credit the towns. And they will see that credit on the development of this year's budget. They just didn't get the check right away. But they're not, it's not that they're not getting it.
I don't know if the expenses and the planning were all about our joint price.
They just wanted for the, they wanted for the joint, the joint meeting. Yeah, usually, in the past, there's been two, in recent years, we've had one, because we haven't, there's been no controversy. But they just wanted for the joint meetings.
But the shared expenses, that's another question. The joint meeting. How about, how about if any questions arise during the joint meeting, you could have them addressed?
Well, that would, that would be the, I mean, the other approach you take, is if we don't know, we're not sure, we say that instead of saying anything one way or another, and then address it and give back.
Right. That way, if we have to use legal, we do, but we're not using it for no reason. It just seems like that would make sense.
Just out of curiosity, what does it cost to have Andrew sit here for these meetings?
Hundred and sixty dollars an hour.
Exactly. That's a lot of money.
Yes.
Super budgetary.
Yeah. It's like twenty-seven. We need ten thousand dollars.
Clearly, yes. I'd say if they.
We need four. But I think sports is, but I think we're smart enough, I think we've learned from that experience. And, and again, if something does, work can come up, we can table, we can get help, so I don't think it's.
Is that?
Yep. I'm okay.
Okay.
We'll go by, like, you know, the bike, should we get a little more of a, a little more emphasis?
I want to make some motion.
What if you support with town council, we take a little?
Yeah, I'll be able to, I'll be able to.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion, because I, I won't be here when they yell. Make a motion.
Now you said.
Not to have legal counsel represented automatically, we have the joint, a bunch of meetings between town councils.
Second. A little favor?
Aye.
Carrie's question.
I'm gonna change my phone number soon.
Now we have legal counsel representation at school committee meeting and discussion.
Yep. So this item has come up a couple of times in the past. We've had some conversations. I don't, I actually don't recall which members were on the committee, but I know some of you have been here the whole time that I've been here, I've heard this discussion at least once or twice. And we've, there's always been some feeling that it would be beneficial, that we have to weigh that against the cost. So, given that we were having the conversation about legal representation at a, at the joint meeting for finances, I figured that we could revisit the conversation. I know that the, there are several school committees that employ legal representation at all of their meetings. There are several that have legal representation at their business meetings, and that's, that's a recommendation that we usually get from the, that we see from many firms that represent schools across Rhode Island. Some of the reasons why they make the recommendation for representation is that they're available for legal advice in executive session while events are being discussed. They are making sure that we are compliant with the Open Meetings Act issues in executive session, and also in open session. They can assist with any agenda issues, Roberts rules issues, if they're applicable. Then they have a better contextual understanding of district issues and district priorities, so that they can give good advice when the questions arise. And of course, then, they can get to know the school committee and the administration, so that they can understand the concerns and the things that we're looking to address. And then, we always have the legal representation when we need assistance with grievances, disciplinary hearings, and so forth. So those are the reasons why our law firm, and also other law firms, have basically made the pitch that we have this discussion and consider whether or not we want legal representation, so we can avoid problems. We've had this discussion a couple of times before, it's, we're just revisiting the conversation. And, so it's on the table.
Again, I would say the same thing. I see this as a huge drain to our budget, but I would recommend that we always have opportunities to go to it. There have been a couple of times when that was happening, and I think to protect us, that needs to happen. That's my opinion. So there, and there's been several times, the chair, I have a question about this, can we do this, can we do that? Carrie's a fabulous resource, but it's, it's nice to have something that I can look at and say, do we need to do it this way? Do we, you know, do we do it a different way? And it's a, it's a, which is a huge benefit, so that we do it smoothly, we take everything, everything's on the way it needs to be done. It's, it gets a little stressful at times, if you do it the wrong way. And I just, I mean, in the past, I mean, relapse can be very expensive. So we're looking at a term, one meeting a month, and, you know, we spent $12,000 for on something that, you know, we have to turn every, we have to have the details. But, why, you know, have the one thing a month, we can refer, a bigger expense, but it's two meetings, you know, with the one meeting.
Oh, so.
Would you talk about the business meeting?
Yeah. Well, some school committees have legal representation at all meetings, most school committees have two meetings per month. Many others have it at the business meeting, which, you know, we, we have two meetings a month. One of them is supposed to be more geared around business items, and one of them is more of an educational meeting. So if we, if that was something that the committee wanted to consider, then what we could do is really make sure that we stick to the business agenda and the educational agenda, and we could, you know, we could do somebody present at every meeting, we could do somebody present at just the business meeting, which is once per month, or we could not have representation at all. But it's, so all of those options exist, whatever the will of the committee is.
I understand why this is coming up. I just think it's a huge drain on budget. I, I understand. Actually, when I first grabbed the committee ballot, you know, six years ago, it was the first question that I asked Carrie's sister, why don't we have your representation at our meetings? So I, I actually, as long as I can, I thought it was illegal not to have your representation. Again, I do assist with, obeying the Roberts rules, any other question, or somebody's making a motion, how to make the motion, is there, is everything in the motion, is it in the motion? And so I thought it was illegal that there wasn't somebody representing at the base. And the town council's having, you know, whatever meeting, you know, town solicitor. So I don't think we're spending something extra that we, if we need it. I think there's always a reason why we need it. I have always thought that. You know, there are times, you know, we need to table things, or go back or something, because we don't, you know, we may need to answer, or something to answer. That might be the case in this town's committee research. There are a lot of allegations. Play that town council has in all the meetings, so they have the expense, and what they ever complains about, if they're in the town solicitor's sitting there, they're table. And then they use the school, they have questions to answer, they need to be answered. So I've always been informed, just so you guys know, the day I came on the committee, and so, I just don't have a, but I think everyone always sees something.
Do we pay in from the portal portal, we just pay in instead of here?
And how are the voices?
We made for travel as well.
I totally understand your points, you make some very valid ones. I just find it odd that we just wouldn't have known to the other, sitting there.
Yeah, it's true.
Now much goes on, to be honest with you, like, now, sorry, the joint budget. Most of the time, they also can look at you. I gotta be honest, there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing. And really, nothing really comes up, you know, they never even ask questions. I might not be able to, everybody just sits there. So to me, I, yeah, I don't, you know, we don't, so we have a budget, and that's kind of silly. I've been at a lot of, or I can play some, because we can, we can.
It was controversial, we had decisions, we wanted to, but I don't think we were able to, because it's presentation, questions, answers, we just have to.
Yeah. I mean, do you think their schedule would prevent them to be able to? Make the second, make the second meeting of the month? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, he could do one, if, if that's the direction that we wanted to go.
He's running some numbers, he's probably looking at ten thousand dollars a year for one meeting a month.
What's your average?
Average of travels.
I don't think, I don't think having a return, you avoid complaints, though, for all instances, if that's the rationale.
Yeah, he could stop you before you got trouble.
Yeah. I, I understand both points, I just, I don't know how hard we work on that budget, and I don't, every penny, these sweets, I just don't see like they're going to get the ten thousand plus dollars. I just, that, that worries me, that, that really worries me, knowing that we are already so frugal. That, that concerns me. But that's my. Carrie?
I agree, you know, we're always worried about, especially unanticipated expenses that may arise from a law server, and, and, like, that that's money that we first of all have to find, and second of all, comes from the true mission of education. So, you know, that's not anything that we want, but we also have to keep in mind the fact that we are the board of trustees of a multi-million dollar corporation. And, you know, we're in the business of making sure, you know, excellence is delivered in education, but also that we run a good school district too. And sometimes that requires legal guidance and representation. And I think it's a good idea to have the solicitor at one business meeting a month. I think that we need to be judicious in our use of time, not only in respect to what the expense, but in respect of the moment coming, and the audience this time as well. So we just have to be, walk hard in some of that. You know, we're looking for having an eternity to a meeting as well, that we're not just conversational, that we conduct business in limited time.
Maybe we should also try to coordinate our executive sessions a little bit too, so that is available, as opposed, many times, it's about mental value. Again, why I'm also, I would suggest that, you know, make sure that, it's not automatic. I mean, you know, we have an agenda that's extremely light, that it should be somebody's called and saying, you know, what we're looking to do this month. So that should be part of the flexibility, I think, to do that.
Yeah. So we can agree on that. We have comments? Okay. Someone to make a motion?
Make a motion to provide legal counsel representations to committee meetings for one meeting, the business meeting per month, with the discretion of the superintendent and the chair to cancel if necessary.
Clear the second. Seven. Okay. There was a second, just a second, just a second.
Where's, where's, where's the funding? Because we have, we're, we're full of, we're full of, you know, capital plan, which we know we're gonna have fun with.
Can we come on a legal?
Yep. We have, we do have a legal line. We are, at this point in time, underutilizing that line, if we look at, you know, kind of expanding that out to the course of the entire fiscal year. We have very few legal issues that we have had to deal with this year. Mostly it's advice or research, you know, recommendations, that kind of thing. So we have plenty of money left in the line. We had, we budgeted some, because we weren't sure we would be with negotiations, but that went really smoothly with limited legal interaction or legal participation in that process. So we're, we're in good shape with that line for this year. And then, we would, we of course need to budget a, an amount for legal representation for next year as well. We'll see how it, how it plays out for this year, and we'll use that to kind of figure out what our budget will be for next year.
Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Yeah. Robert, you have it?
Yes.
Okay. We have the two sets of a school plan, meeting calendar, review changes.
So this was on the agenda, just in the event that we needed to look at dates and days, depending on what the decisions were around legal representation. But I think my recommendation is that the calendar is fine, and really, it would just be around specifying the business meeting and specifying the education, but we can stick to Tuesdays.
And a couple Wednesdays.
Yeah, this, there's two Wednesdays that are scheduled in the 2017 calendar, in April and in June. And there are some reasons for that. I think one of them has to do with the budget in April, and then in June, there's the Exeter Finance meeting, yeah.
Exeter, the.
I have a motion to approve.
I think we are going to.
Yeah, calendar's approved, so we don't have to make any changes to it. Yeah, this, there's two Wednesdays that are scheduled in the 2017 calendar, in April and in June. Um, and there are some reasons for that. I think one of them has to do with the budget in, in April and then in June, there's the Exeter Finance meeting, yeah.
Exeter, uh, the, I think we are going to.
Yeah, calendar's approved, so we don't have to make any changes to it.
Okay. And we have the, the bylaws, uh, pretty much a cleanup of the bylaws, um, to, um, along with, um, because of the charter change with the one that's like whatever that is, um, just still a couple spelling errors. Um, one, we just don't, we're having trouble with some of those, um, committees.
Speaking, speaking of which, there's a spelling error right next to treasure.
I know, I know. I picked up some more.
So we, uh, Robin did a review for spelling and grammar and I had a copy with, um, spelling corrections, grammatical corrections, so there's no, there's no change at all except for fixing grammar, fixing spelling. So Robin did that and I have it outlined and read. Um, I don't, I don't know that that constitutes a change to the bylaws, but if we're going to clean it up and get some things out that are no longer, um, part of our practice or part of our, uh, talent rules, or actually, now that it's going to legislation, it's part of law, uh, we have some conflicts with law that we need to fix up. But in, while we're doing that, I'll, I'll also help to address the spelling and grammar that Robin has picked up on as well as what is on the sheet that you guys got in the, in your packet.
I just love the last sentence. The conclusion. Certainly no barrier, public service provides a safe level of frustration and satisfaction. That's just, it's a great sentence. Yeah. And great, it was like a same. Yeah, it's just, it's funny that it's in there, but it really does capture it. So pretty much it's changed the charter, except the charter needs a cleanup, um, cleanup.
Make a motion to accept the changes to the bylaws.
Second. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay, we have a new high school course offering?
Yep. Uh, I want to give a little bit of background to this. Uh, the presentation that we had at the beginning of this meeting on bringing in URI to work with our health classes to address, um, some concerns that, uh, we should all have in Rhode Island, in this town, in this school, in all schools, um, really is trying to address the non-academic, some of the non-academic needs, um, of, of some of our students, some of our students' friends, really to kind of keep this community safe. Uh, we have tremendous amount of concern around the emotional well-being of our students. I think it is a trend that is happening not just here, but across the nation. Um, at this point in time, I know we've seen some examples of this and, and I know Mark, at one point, you raised the question that, um, was already on my mind and on our mind around our graduation rate, around, uh, our dropout rate. And, uh, we are concerned. We are losing students for a variety of reasons. And, um, right now, uh, we have very few options in our school to address the needs of some of our really struggling learners. And as a result, uh, if they, if kids don't fit into the, the support that we currently have available, then there's a strong likelihood that they end up not making it. There's retention that occur, that happens. And the more kids get retained, the more they get, the more likely they are to drop out. A lot of kids make the decision to try for their GPD. We sign them out, they go to their GPD, they don't finish that, they become dropouts. The dropout rate obviously directly affects our graduation rate. Our graduation rate is declining, our dropout rate is increasing. And these are statistics that, forget about the fact that they, um, that they are of deep concern to us for the sake of the children that are not making it, but the side effects are that the data for our school is used for things like rankings and all those other variables that the department looks at and that they publish in the Rhode Island Monthly Ranking, that's where your question came from. So we've been looking at these issues, um, from a lot of different perspectives and, um, we need to do something drastic. So our current ALP program is strictly a special education program and it services a particular population of students. But there are a bunch of other kids, not necessarily kids that qualify for special ed, who require some additional supports, whether they be academic, whether they be, um, social emotional substance, whatever the case may be. Um, we need to come up with a comprehensive plan. We, we have had a couple of meetings. We do plan on coming to you with a, with a, with a presentation to show you what we are going to do in terms of expanding our ALP program so that it's not just targeting a very small number of kids that fit the qualifications to, to be in that special education program. So, uh, under that large umbrella of a, of an ALP program, there should be a number of different pathways that exist for kids to get to graduation. And right now, we have one pathway in our ALP program and it's the special ed pathway for the kids that qualify. There's a bunch of other kids that we are not doing enough for at this time. Um, so we've been looking at some, some, um, options that other schools have, have played around with, have implemented. Um, one of the things that is very low cost has been the use, not in Exeter West Greenwich, but in some other schools, has been the use of student peer mentors supports. Um, a lot of times, students benefit directly from interaction with their peers as opposed to certain adults. Um, and we have an opportunity, I think, in our district because we offer four credits per semester, that's thirty-two credits per year, in a, in a school that requires twenty-four for graduation. And, um, and so some of our students have a great deal of flexibility in their schedule. We have passed a service learning requirement and, um, this idea is that we would staff a student support lab, uh, so students would have to meet certain GPA and academic standing requirements, but they would be assigned to the lab to support students during the day, students that needed extra help, extra tutoring, extra support. Um, they could be in the lab, working with kids who are sent there. They could also be assigned out to a classroom to be a student support in that classroom alone with the classroom teacher. So these would be older kids, eleven to twelve graders who are going in, for example, to support some of our foundations classes, our intro classes, classes where kids have, um, have struggled and where our failure rates might be a little bit higher than what we want them to be. And it kind of gives us an opportunity to involve other students in the collective responsibility of building up the success of the rest of their peers. Um, this is, the reason that this is on the agenda now in isolation of the bigger plan, because the bigger plan has to involve a lot more than this, is that we have a requirement that new courses get approved by the school committee before they go into the course selection booklet. So this isn't a guarantee that it would run, but this is, we're looking for approval for students to be assigned to this class, it would be a service learning class. Their responsibility would be to help support students in need through onsite tutoring in, uh, in the lab, but also to be assigned as a, as a student support in a classroom with another, with another teacher, um, to support the student center in that class. Um, this would be an elective credit, but it, it's an elective credit because the kids are already well above what their requirements would be for actual graduation and it would be a structured way for them to meet, in my opinion, meet their service learning credits that, the service learning hours that they're now requiring for graduation. Um, I would need to look at enrollment to determine, interest and determine if the class runs, how many periods it runs and so forth, um, but it needs to be in the program of studies in order for us to forward with the next phase. So this, this would be an approval saying that you agree, it's a course that we should, that we should offer. And then, um, and then just like any other course, if we don't have the interest, then it doesn't run.
Robert? There are other people looking at helping our kids, showing reason our kids to help other kids a lot.
I think we have a lot of kids that would really love this opportunity. Um, we, we actually have some supports that are built in right now. A lot of our National Launch Society kids will tutor, but it's all done after school hours. Um, and we know in this community that sometimes it's really hard to get kids to stay after school because transportation is not like they can walk home. Um, so this would be really an opportunity to kind of build it into the structure of the school day. And, um, I think it has tremendous potential to support some, some kids that just need that extra boost. Uh, this is not the answer to everything that we need to look at, but, um, but because we have a November date, um, of trying to get the school committee to approve any new courses for the beginning of the booklet, that's why this is on the agenda right now.
I agree, it's a great idea. I just have a question, so they're not, they are regular ed students, so they don't have IEPs?
Correct.
Not even necessarily five oh fours?
Correct.
They're just, they're just kids that struggle?
Yes.
In regular ed?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's a complete, all right.
Yeah, this isn't a special education.
Not at all.
At all. Not that a student couldn't go into a classroom where there are children who have.
Well, I was wondering if it's someone on the fence that is ready to be out of that service, you know what I mean?
But I mean, some of our classes that are, um, that are inclusive, inclusive classes, there are typical peers, there are kids that have special education needs with IEPs. You know, a student might be assigned to go into, let's just say, Mrs. Wilma's classroom and she's got kids in her class, some of them have IEPs, some of them don't. Um, that person isn't going in there strictly because she has children in her class with IEPs. That student would be going in there has an extra set of hands to help any kid in that classroom regardless of status that is struggling. So if Mrs. Wilma wants to do group work, there's an extra set of hands that could sit with kids, work with kids and support.
Well, I think there are a lot of students that don't qualify.
That right, there's support.
You know, they're just like, oh, that much.
Agreed.
So, or like you said, kids that might have social emotional issues. Right. And anxiety, and, um, concentrating and focusing, but they just don't qualify for services.
Yes.
Are some of the, uh, students who take classes off campus like in college, are maybe eligible to help out with this as well as time of time?
Sure.
Flexibility, so it's not just kids who.
Well, they're still our students.
Right.
Yep.
And this is one, only, that's a bigger program we have.
Much bigger program. So we're, again, we're, we're having conversations, but I just, I needed some time to really think it through because the, the, there are some red flags that we've been seeing, um, as has been brought to my attention by members of the school, but you've also seen the same things. Um, but we're looking at attendance, which is a problem that we have. We have a much bigger problem with chronic absenteeism than we've had in quite some time. Um, we are looking at, um, mentoring, we're looking at, uh, this element, but we're also looking at how do we incorporate blended and virtual learning opportunities for the kids, that, that might be the best approach. Um, uh, so again, lots of different ideas and, uh, so it has to be distributed meetings, we involved some teachers for the first time in a little bit of a conversation on one day of this week yesterday. Um, there's a lot more conversations that are coming. I have a meeting scheduled at the high school first week in December, I think, December eighth, eighth, eighth? So, second week in December. Um, because I think this is, this is an issue that all of us need to wrap our hands around, wrap our arms around and help to address. Um, if we don't do anything about it, then the trend is some of our, some of our statistics are not looking good and we need to reverse them. So I think it's time for us to act. Um, and I look forward to being able to share, share with you something that we have come up with to, to really provide some supports to kids that we're currently not servicing in a way that they need. And, and I can't just sit back and watch that happen.
I have a motion to approve the service of learning support.
Second. All is in favor? I, I think that's a second.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really excited about it.
Okay. We have the musical instrument.
So this was a, um, it sixteen seventy dash five, it was for the musical instruments. It really called the, uh, we approved or assigned, uh, approved and assignment of hundred thousand dollars to get the, uh, fine arts department music program up to speed. Uh, and that's, that would have been great if we were just purchasing a bunch of hundred dollar tools, uh, but we're purchasing items that really started bumping up against the purchasing, uh, policy. So a separate fine arts department came up with a bid spec and we went up to bid. This is, so, up to bid. Bid was written such a way that, um, we could parse out depending on the expertise and the recommendation of the fine arts department. So this is it. The good news is, is that there, uh, through the bid process, um, you can see on the second page, the, the total spend right now is eighty-seven thousand seventy-five. So that's substantial savings that the person is going out.
So if you recall, the hundred thousand dollars was based on the projected prices. So they were, those prices were attached to specific instrument needs. Um, the bid incorporates all, everything that was on that list. Um, so.
Saving.
We're saving money, yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just making a question now. It's always, I was looking at shipping here, all of them, and shipping does cost so much money. Uh, the Winger Corporation.
Yeah.
The carts and chairs, I'm sure they're probably, they're having instrument authors and, and, uh, you know, that's a huge hunk.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty substantial and that's something that, so the product spec and that's what we have in-house, they didn't want to get into a mixed bag, uh, they're the best product going and you were gonna pay that up charge, it would have been very, we started the up charge and I think there was only one other company that would provide the Winger, but they were just purchasing from Winger and passing everything along to us. So it just made more sense on the per unit pricing to go with Winger, but outside of that free.
Where's the Winger over there?
Uh, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Well, it is like five.
Well, no, my point, my, my point is, is that if, you know, you allow them to arrange your shipping, you're gonna pay it twelve forty-eight, but, I mean, that's basically, that's, that's like three or four hundred dollars short of a full truckload of shipping. You know, you could, you, if you look into it and chop it out, you can probably chop a little bit out of there, it's a lot, but, you know, I think if it's really a concern, you probably, probably cut that down by.
Minnesota.
Yeah, oh, that's a waste.
Yeah, yeah, they're coming from the people that get it.
You don't have to bill one.
I'll just bill myself down. Does the issue?
Get my oyster pot and drag it down.
The issue you have with Minnesota is that a lot of freight carriers go into some local areas. It's expensive to get anything out of those states up there.
Now, can you, can you give your, can we go back? Yeah, can you just look at the, um, the boarding of the bond charges?
I want to, to each individual. No, just a word hit.
A one seven seventeen dash over five musical instruments and equipment, total eighty-seven seven seven, eighty-seven thousand seventy-five. Great. Thank you. In a minute, second.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have a first reading of policy seven ninety-seven ten.
Okay, ninety-seven ten, this is a first read. Uh, we do have an existing ninety-seven ten that I believe is in your packet. Uh, you'll notice that the last time this policy was looked at was April of nineteen ninety-eight and, um, one of the things that we've been doing.
No, just a board hit. 1670-17, dash over five musical instruments and equipment, total eighty-seven, 77, $87,075.
Great. Thank you. No matter second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
For you.
Okay. And we have a first reading of policy 9710.
Okay, 9710, this is a first read. We do have an existing 9710 that I believe is in your packet. You'll notice that the last time this policy was looked at was April of 1998. And one of the things that we've been doing slowly, steadily, is getting all the policies in the same format as the ones that we've been recently adopting and amending. So one of the big changes is the adjustment of the policy to the correct format. And then there are some other adjustments based on some things that have changed since the time that this policy was written. So for example, the supervisory onsite responsibility of school administrators is written into their contract, so that is something that wasn't the case in 1998. It is the case now. There are some clearer definitions and there are some responsibilities on the part of advisors and coaches around notification in the event that practices are canceled, events are canceled, that kind of thing. So we don't have to have a lot of conversations right now if you're not ready to, but I would ask that you take a look at it and it will be back on the agenda at the next meeting so we can discuss it and make any additional amendments. You know, if there's anything that you want me to take a look at in between, I will be happy to do that and then we can look to adopt at the next meeting.
I have a question about, remember 05, responsibilities of athletic coaches?
Yes.
I know there's been a problem in the past with the time, like sometimes the coaches might not be able to get here to look for your homework, but whose responsibilities that, that time in between, is that, that's tricky.
Yeah.
It doesn't really say it on this, but...
So we've, we've had a lot of conversations. We have fewer coaches right now where that is the issue than what the issue used to be. But in a lot of cases, the coaches have worked with us to identify someone who is the responsible party. So if the coach is not able to get here until, let's say it's after the administrators in the building have left, that's typically when the greatest problem exists. And in those cases, we've worked with the coach and worked with the athletic director to identify somebody, whether it's a parent volunteer to run a homework club for kids so that they're supervised during that interim. But I will say that the number of coaches we have, that there's that gap that exists that you described has really diminished quite a bit. It is something that we consider when we're looking at coaches. So we do the best we can, but typically it's with somebody that ends up volunteering to, say with the kids, whether it be a parent or a volunteer coach or whatever. And sometimes it works out to be really beneficial because the kids have structure.
Yeah.
And the volunteer has to go through...
I think the last time, the last one that we had was soccer. It was Karen? Yeah. So we had her dad go through the process of getting his, yeah, so he did the supervision for the, for the kids while he was waiting for his daughter to come from Wallow. And he loved it.
That was nice.
Yep. So again, this will be on the agenda for the next meeting as well, because it's so different that we're just treating it as a new policy. Okay?
Okay, then we have policy 8511, this is a second meeting and adoption.
So I was, as you know, I was not here at the meeting when this was initially discussed. And Robert did take some notes. There was a discussion that took place with some questions. I think Lee had some questions. I read those, those notes. I looked at the policy, I made some adjustments. I shared those adjustments with Cordean and the rest of our committee. And I also, because Lee had the questions, I shared those adjustments with Lee as well. So this has been revised to address the questions that were asked at that meeting in my absence. I think they were good recommendations they make for some clearer direction relative to the concerns that you had. And so this is not the same copy that you had at the last meeting. Those questions and concerns have been addressed.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 8511.
Second. All's in favor? She has something to say. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion here. Thank you. We're going to reserve capital funding on these.
Yeah, move to enclosure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're wrapping up the Lydon School that should be finished next week. We're getting good, good news from the supplier milting Caterpillar. They, it looks like the generators will be in, in mid-December. And we'll be meeting later in the month, in December, prior to the winter break or the holiday break to determine if they can do the cutover at that point. They are going to have to take the power down from both locations, Wallow and the junior senior high, that's going to involve national grid. So that's going to happen, perhaps, on the weekend or when students and faculty are not here. So we're looking at that calendar. So just think about what we just did. $100,000 for music.
What is that?
$150,000 for the playground. Eight hun, uh, $350,000 for the generators. All budgeted, but there's this thing called cash flow. And we'll have all the money at the end of the year, but we've got to make the cash flow with the superintendent and treasurer, and I am working fiercely on that. And so we are keenly aware of that situation. It could really, we're going to be fine. Our next payment from the towns is, is the 15th of December. So the timing will be good. What lies before us though is the next project on the five-year plan, which is an $869,000 spend as a six. In the next meeting, if not the one in December, probably the first, or the business meeting in January, that's where we'll have the audit. We'll have all our trial balances up to speed and we'll be able to give the committee a much better picture of, you know, where do we really want to move going forward? Because don't forget, we're self-funding. So it's not like there's a bank account out there when we go to bond, we're tapping into that and going, this is all coming out of our capital reserve. Having said all that, the request in front of you is to, I think I finally got through to the engineers and the architect, that I am very concerned that this number is not strong enough. I mean, it starts up above us and there's 13 units and they go through the building and they go down to the classrooms. And just lifting, just lifting the units, there's 13 units, just the crane we're going to be, to get those off of there is going to be pretty significant cost. And then I'm more concerned about the chase, once we get into the buildings, where, where does this stage factor? So at the last meeting we had, Torado Architects said, I would like to get, I think they're called Gale, G-A-L-E. I'd like them to come in and kind of look at this with his EBS, who did the engineering over it and take another look at the routing.
Gale or Quail?
I don't know. He could have said Quail. I don't know.
Quail is a very good air company. They're manufacturer, they, they really know that stuff very, very well. HP music.
And one of, one of the things is, is they're original units, so if we take them off and we somehow are able to get an identical, that's better, but if we're not and we have to change the footprint.
Any kind of...
And so, so I talked to Lewis, that cost was, it's already in there, so it would not be an additional cost. I would just feel more comfortable going to my boss and saying, it's not 869, or it is 869. So that we can talk intelligently to the firm of position and all that. So that's what I'm looking to have, you know, bringing the committee up to speed, but that should really look at. There are some other projects that are in the five-year plan that might not be as expensive, but that might be more of a priority given that we could open up to it, to the discussion again and bring back.
So just to be clear, are we being asked to approve the 869310 or we have, are we being asked to approve the date further, continue the study?
Continue the study.
Okay. I'm all for that. I was just confused by the way this is...
No, the 869, you actually, that was approved. That's what's on record and wide. Remember, part of this process, we can always move, the school committee can always elect to move that out further years out, maybe if it's a different financing structure or whatever.
I'm thinking we might need to have a capital committee meeting shortly to discuss this. I don't have a problem approving, you know, continuing the study. This is budgeted, standard is budgeted, I understand cash flow issue. And I also, at some point, we're going to have that almost over here. So I think we need to discuss those things before we get any more.
Yeah, I think, just to be clear, maybe I wasn't clear on that. The study would give us, I think, a better number because part of it is, let's just say it comes back and goes, you know what, that is, in fact, that number's hidden. It could be seven hundred, it's possible. Then we have a decision to make, let's get the packet together, let's get out to the street and then let's, when the building closes at the end of the school year, we start. It's all about a timing thing. Once we start down that, I don't, I don't feel comfortable going to the gym and saying, let's put the bid spec together and let's start going. And then when they come in and they start looking and they're going, you're not looking at 869, you're looking at 1.3.
Well, yeah, and given what we've been through with the generators, it's an awful lot of work to even carry the backup and the budget.
So that's what I think Bob is trying to go with. Let's get a more solid number so that we, we have the right information that then used as our discussion around what are our priorities? Do we need to move things around? What is our funding stream? So that's...
I think, I, one of the things that I was thinking of, and I don't know how we fly, but you know, given the fact that we've got that one per, I mean, the end of the project, the way it's going, if everything checks out, it's going to be fine. It's just, we have to get to the end before we get all the money. And you know, if we, if we study this from all part now, and we look at it carefully, we might be able to plan for a small bond or something, if the end gets made up, you know, short-term type of thing. Because I would, we definitely need to continue this, but we need to, to your point, continue with accurate premium. Because if we request a bond, we have to request it, you know, accurately.
And their assessment, obviously, of those are the whole industry, not just... Right, exactly. So you know, that was kind of a reveal, as you noted. Business is squishy sometimes, you know, and you find things out. And those units feed, they go down to, go to the most inner core at the junior high, the room's on there. It's feeding all the way down to there. And those units, if they're not, I don't want to replace up there and not have it working down there. That's not...
Oh, will they look at the...
And that's what they're...
Yeah. Because it might not really lead to exactly what's up there. They might have better ways of doing that so that they can section cheaper. Right. And serve more energy efficient, right?
Yeah. And that's where I think that footprint is going to change. That is not, it's not going to be a 20-year-old, those units are probably monsters compared to what they're for by now.
But doing the, changing the, changing the entryway is not a good, that's...
Sorry. There's no vote, I don't think there's a vote. It's kind of just an update to let you know that, that, you know, this is, this is the project that's next in the queue, but I feel that, you know, everything we just said so was, just some...
That's what I was going to use the...
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, any words and comments?
I just, I did not say this at the beginning of the meeting when we acknowledged the two school committee members that are leaving, but I have said this a number of times and I really mean it and I feel like I want to say it again at the end of this meeting. I talked to my colleagues from around the state and there are conversations about how school committees are, can be challenging to work with and that there have been some crazy things that I've heard that have gone on in school committee meetings. And I have always been able to say that I have a school committee with seven strong people who don't always agree with me and don't always agree with each other, but we always show respect to each other and we look at the varying opinions as something that's a positive, because sometimes it helps us to think about things that maybe we hadn't thought about before. So I've been very lucky to work with a super supportive, involved school committee. And I, I hope that that will continue. And I'm sure that the remaining members will help to make sure that that is the relationship that we continue to have on our school committee. But I do want to tell you that I appreciate so much more than you know, the way that you've contributed to this group and that you've allowed us to work together to really make some good differences for Exeter West Greenwich. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we have a fourth meeting, so we have a school meeting on December 13th. That'll be the first meeting with the new members. So with Robin, I guess, I'm back, so if you all want to take a look at the, the subways, I'll have us sign up for it. And maybe, yeah, that'll be good. We have a wonderful, it's giving... Make a motion for adjournment. Make, make a motion for adjournment.
I'll say that.
I'll say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.